Good morning. It's Wednesday, March 29th, 2017. Were you the one that said the drought is over? I saw your email. It's true. Anyway, and we're in the Senator hearing room, Cordell Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, for our weekly Board of Commissioner meeting. Happy to see people here this morning.
Yeah.
And if you would, would you join us in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item always is public comment. Nobody has signed up. Take advantage of that. It must mean everybody in the county just loves what we're doing. Is that...
I'm not sure that's the truth, but they just probably aren't here to tell us.
I just said it was.
Yeah, okay.
All right. With that put aside, our first item will be the consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron, if you would do that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is good to be here with you this morning. And the rain is good. Everything's getting greener by the minute. Yeah, I know you want to see sun.
And my tall log.
Yes. So I'll move that we make a motion to move the consent calendar under health, proven order, reappointing Sherri Besma, Adam Maurer, and Kyle McMahon to the ambulance service advisory committee with terms ending January 31st. And they have, I think, a very good person overseeing that. January 31st, 2020, that'd be you. A proven amendment, number one, to the intergovernmental agreement with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network to reinstate the agreement from July 1st, 2016, extend through June 30th, 2017, and add $449,109 in funding for rental assistance and supported housing services. Under Public Works, an order, a proven order extending the franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon, Inc. to provide cable television services to Marion County through June 30th, 2017. And also, under Public Works, a proven order scheduling a public hearing on April 19th, 2017, for a mass gathering of MG-17-002 Supergame.
I'll second the motion. One comment, a couple of comments on this ambulance service area advisory committee that I'm on. Just Sherri Besma in particular, Adam Maurer. Sherri, you've met her up at the meeting in Norfolk. She's with Lions Ambulance. She's the one that's made it possible to give the... Really, I'd have to point right to her to give the ambulance coverage to Detroit.
Right, right.
Volunteers up at Norfolk, pretty busy.
Yeah.
And I see her at these meetings. She's the one that knows it all, knows the statutes, what everything that applies. Really important person. And Adam Maurer, I've known for a long time from State and Ambulance. And he does a good involvement. A good job, too. I don't know personally Kyle, but anyway, what I'm trying to tell you, the people in this committee are really special and working hard.
Yeah, that can be a real issue, we know.
All right, so I'm moving. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Our first item this morning, action item, is under community services. It's a bunch of them. We consider a proclamation designating April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marion County. Got a long list of names.
Little too close for my comfort there, deputy.
We have to get serious today.
Okay.
So Tammy, would you go ahead and lead this and do any introductions or so, whatever?
I'd be happy to, Commissioners. I'm Tamara Getch. I'm the Director for Marion County Community Services. I'm excited to be here today with our fabulous community partners that are doing important work in our community on preventing and supporting children and families throughout our area. Joining me today, in no particular order, is Patrice Altenhafen with Family Building Blocks, Dave Wilson from the District Attorney's Office, Commander Sheila Lawrence with the Sheriff's Office, Pete Teller with Leslie Middle School, Allison Kelly, Liberty House, Mary Grimm from our office, Community Services, Julie Hilty from Family Building Blocks as well. Did I leave anybody out, Catherine?
Sergeant.
With Shangri-La, so...
And the sergeant. Sergeant.
Jason, I'm very glad you're so...
Thank you. Sorry, not everybody's on my list, so please, if I've missed you, go ahead and introduce yourself as we pass the mic. So we're going to be passing the mic back and forth. As I said, we're excited to be here today. We do this annually in Marion County to celebrate the success of our prevention programs and also to bring the attention to the importance of prevention in our community. As we have been doing for the last few years, we have chosen April, we've chosen April as our time to provide connections and supports to child abuse prevention efforts. And this year, again, for the sixth year in a row, we have put our efforts into this particular slogan. Everyone has a role to play in preventing child abuse. You, the first step of preventing child abuse. So this is an important piece to our campaign. And again, for the second year in a row, we will be having a tree in front of the Capitol that will be done with the blue ribbons that unfortunately symbolizes the children in Oregon who have been impacted by neglect and abuse in Oregon. And I also want to just bring special attention to, this effort doesn't just happen. It really is through a concerted and deliberate attention that is guided by Julie Hilty, who is from Family Building Blocks. She's been doing this for the last probably four years in taking the lead role in this. However, she's supported by a great planning team that helps make all of this happen. We are asking people in our community to join us in celebrating and recognizing the importance of child abuse prevention efforts. You'll see many of us, if not all of us, have either a blue ribbon or we are wearing a pinwheel for prevention. So we're going to kick it off and we're going to pass the microphone as we need. Patrice, you're on.
Good morning. Thank you for having us all here today for this important awareness-building event. It's my job to talk about statistics, first of all. And that kind of rubbed me the wrong way when I thought about it because these are not statistics. These are people, these are children that we are talking about today. There are friends and our neighbors. There are people in our community that we can all support and protect. Even one victim of child abuse is too many. And last, out of all children abused and neglected in Oregon, 99, 99 and 1/2 percent of the victims were perpetrated by a family member or someone in their home. And this statistic alone reminds us that all families need support and working families is one of our countries... Working with families is one of our county's most important investments. So this campaign incorporates, like Tammy said, that comprehensive approach that is geared to supporting families and caretakers. The sobering facts about child abuse in Oregon and Marion County. Ten, over 10,000 confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon in 2015. The total number of incidents of child abuse and neglect in Marion County did decrease by 2% between 13 and 15. And neglect and the threat of harm are the greatest type of child abuse reported in our county. 488 and 357 respectively. And we'll talk a little bit about that threat of harm and neglect in a little bit. About half of the children are under the age of six. This is our most vulnerable population. I took a deeper dive into that statistic. And over 13% of the victims of child abuse in our county were under the age of one. These are infants we're talking about. Our most vulnerable citizens are subjected to child abuse. What is very important to remember is that child abuse can be prevented. It is a preventable offense. Our parents are our most important role in that as most of the offenses happen in the home. Partnering with parents is the number one priority of probably every partner in this collaboration here today. There is nothing more important than partnering with a parent when the child is at its youngest, when a parent may not have the skills or knowledge of how to parent appropriately. This parent may have been subject to abuse as a child themselves. They maybe have this child and not even know how to hold their baby or talk to their baby, have eye contact with their baby. And that might be through ignorance and it might be through fear. And so there's a primary goal for Family Building Blocks and many of our partners is to build that confidence in the skill in the parents so that the child is safe and that family stays together. Last year, over 11,000 children entered foster care. They were removed from their family. That's 11,000 too many. And we are working very hard to keep children safe and families together in our county.
Next, we have Dave with the DA's office. So if you could just pass that down. Dave, if you can turn the mic on for me.
It's on the bottom. We good? So every person has the ability to report what they see. And it's such an important role by... If everyone takes the attitude that you're going to report a suspicious injury of a child, you have hundreds of thousands of eyes on, in the community, on each child. No information is too little. Any suspicious injury can be reported to the child abuse hotline and let the experts decide about whether or not what you're observing is child abuse. It's all pieces of a puzzle. If everyone takes, makes it a duty of themselves to see what's going on to kids and everyone's making these calls, lots of information that might not seem important to you gets put together in one place and we can act to prevent child abuse. If you have any questions about child abuse reporting, you can refer to the website, parentforthefuture.com.
Could you repeat that website, please?
It's www paretforthefuture.com.
Good morning. I'm Sheila Lawrence from the Sheriff's Office. And what I wanted to say today is that the child prevention is much more than a police matter. We all play a role in that. The police are usually responding after the fact, but there's so much more that we can do. Like Dave said, all of us can say something if we see something. Everybody plays a role. The Sheriff's Office focuses on helping our community partners recognize the signs of child abuse and ways we can prevent it. Today Sergeant Hickam is going to talk about ways the Community Resource Unit works to help prevent child abuse.
The Marion County Sheriff's Office Community Resource Unit is very passionate and diligent about what we do. We see the need for education and education starts with our kids. And we, as early as last week, I was at a preschool on Lancaster. Those are three-year-old and four-year-old children that we're making contact with and we're building that relationship with. And we're building that sense of trust with police officers. And then we carry it into elementary school. We attend Parent Night where we're making the contact. We've already met the children and now we're making contact with the parents. And we're building that relationship with the parents and the trust. We reach out to our community partners where we're at the Marion County Fair. We're at, you know, Volcano Stadium during, serving hot dogs and playing baseball with kids. We teach our deputies how to be involved, not only at work, but we teach them how to be involved with our children through sports activities, being coaches, being mentors, going to Boys and Girls Club and attending functions like that. And just the total commitment to our youth and education. And then the other side of it for us is the criminal investigation and working with our partners at the District Attorney's Office. And the passion that we have to deal with, to go out and seek every single person that is involved in the case, to make sure they get interviewed, to make sure that we find justice for the families. And at the end of the day, to be able to look in the parents' eyes and say, "We have done everything that we can and we have talked to every person that we can and we will give 100% of what we have to get the case resolved and to try to bring closure to you and your family."
I think we all know that we could probably double our work and even multiply what we're doing by the use of volunteers. And so part of this effort is to encourage everyone to stop and think about what is around them that they could volunteer. And whether it's a nonprofit agency working to prevent abuse already or it's in a child's school, maybe one of your own children, or even in your own neighborhood, getting to know your neighbors, volunteering with the Neighborhood Association. As we all know, that parents need extra support and our community needs that extra support. So thinking about what volunteer hours we can give. Our time is a gift to our community. And so that is a great effort that we, that we're focused on during this month as well. And then I'd like Pete Tyler from Leslie Middle School to talk about how we can continue to educate ourselves in this matter.
Morning. Salem Kaiser Schools and Leslie Middle School know that our students and families are who are most important. And in that regard, then, we hope to collaborate with our families because we want all of our students to graduate and be prepared for a successful life. To do that, though, we want to be informed and help our families be informed of what their students are doing, know what their activities are, and stay involved because that's the most important thing that any of us as adults can do is stay involved with our youth. We know that parenting isn't easy and we want to find ways to offer each other a helping hand. There's no instruction manual that was given out. We had children. A lot of what we learn is from trial and error. But the more that we can collaborate and lend advice and a helping hand in regards to what we're doing together is what's going to be most important for our students. It takes a village.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Allison Kelly, the CEO of Liberty House, which is the Child Abuse Assessment Center serving Marion County. And that role is important. Our partners here are all playing different roles and the prevention is huge. Where there are concerns of abuse or neglect, there are, there's a really big need to know where to call and who can provide the right environment. So Liberty House provides assessment, advice, and support for children and families facing abuse or neglect. And we also now provide trauma-informed mental health services for children facing abuse, neglect, trauma, or grief. And with that, we are, we play a key role in that investigation. So if you can imagine being a child and if you have had something happening to you on a regular basis or whatever, depending what that is, there are a lot of reasons why you really wouldn't want to tell anybody. And needing to talk to someone who has a lot of training in listening in a supportive way and inviting you to describe things in a non-leading way is really, really important. So there are about 30 years of research, the national model. So with that, that's what Liberty House does and we really appreciate all of our partners. When we're talking about neglect, I think the main point here is that neglect really is a form of abuse. And we see that when we have families who are struggling. We have a lot of families who just struggle to get through each day. Sometimes, like was said earlier, if they come from their own history of abuse or neglect, sometimes we have families who are struggling with addiction or alcoholism or co-occurring disorders. And just because that's going on in a family doesn't mean there will be abuse. But sometimes those things make it hard for parents to really supervise their children adequately, to meet their basic needs like food and shelter. And so that can really have harmful effects on children. And that's why everything that's been said about leaning in as a community, volunteering, getting to know your neighbors and that kind of thing, that all helps. Those are protective factors. And with that, what, you know, what we see sometimes at Liberty House are actual injuries that maybe they could have been explained by an accident. But then we ask that deeper question, why is it that that accident occurred? So there's a lot that goes into that. And I think it just goes along with this theme that everybody can play a role in leaning in and supporting the families around them.
Again, our students are who are most important to us. And we often are looked at as the front line in regards to dealing with children, educators, teachers, and our school staff. And so it's very important that we build connections with our kids because we don't want anyone to suffer in silence. And we encourage our students and young people to reach out and talk to a trusted staff member, person that they know, a trusted adult, as a way to be able to improve their circumstances. But children might not always do that. So we need to make ourselves available to be able to recognize when things aren't right, when things look out of the ordinary or unusual, so that we can investigate somewhat and be able to look into what's going on and make those important calls that then need to be made if something is going on. And so please, we encourage everyone to keep an eye on our youth.
Catherine? Just want to speak to Shangri-La's importance.
Catherine Skelton with Shangri-La's Youth and Family Services. Through our Family Support and Connections Program, we work directly with families who are overwhelmed by lack of resources or financially housing resources. These things tend to cause a lot of stress in a parent's life. And those stresses can lead to things like child abuse and neglect because they're just overwhelmed and they're not sure how to support themselves. So we work to tailor services to support those parents in accessing resources and helping them overcome those stresses. And really, we advocate for families. And in those relationships that we build with the families we work with, the parents are able to find their way through those stressors and things that are overwhelming them. We work specifically with modeling appropriate child-parent interactions. And really, the parent's role is to be the, be a supportive person and then a nurturing person for those parents and those children. And we... I have lost my train of thought. I apologize. And so those trusted relationships that we build with those families really does give them the courage and the support and the strength to access programs and learn new parenting skills and form new relationships with their children.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. To summarize what our whole committee has said, to start with, our parents are very important in the role that they play in helping their children better understand how to watch out and to be safe. Next is to report any suspicion or disclosure of abuse. If you have a child that comes to you and expresses fear or concern, we really need to listen to that. And that leads into how everyone has a role in preventing child abuse. Also, as Julie mentioned, our volunteers are needed in all of the organizations that work with children in the community. Also, it's important for us to educate ourselves so that we better know those signs and triggers that may cause children to face a situation of abuse. Also, neglect is abuse, so it's not just physical. It can also just be letting children have no parental or safe adult's guidance. And then also, it's important to help children to feel comfortable in telling a friend or a trusted adult if they're afraid or feeling that they may be a victim of abuse. So Commissioners, at your seats, you have an invitation to our Child Abuse Kickoff, which will take place next Wednesday, April 5th, at 10:00 a.m. at the State Capitol. This is where we will have our blue ribbons hanging in a tree at the State Capitol. And also, we will get, be giving those folks in attendance a pinwheel that they can actually place in the ground below the tree of recognizing those children who unfortunately were victims of abuse. So also, we have this information on our website. And I would encourage not just our Commissioners, but our entire community to take part in this event.
An important part of what we do at Leslie Middle School and it's something that we can all participate in and be part of, and that is taking the hands and words are not for hurting pledge. That's an easy way that indicates that we're all in this together and doing our part. So at this time, I would like to encourage everyone and the audience as well to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I will not...
I will not.
Use my hands or my words...
Use my hands or my words.
For hurting myself...
For hurting myself.
Or others.
Or others.
You, us, we, all are the first step in preventing child abuse. I want to encourage everybody to make sure they take a look at the calendar of events that are happening throughout the month of April. Of course, this is year-round that we focus on child abuse prevention, but there are a lot of different things happening in the community. This is also available on the Parent for the Future website and our Facebook page, Marion County Child Abuse Prevention. We also have I Will signs. This is such an active step that anybody in our community can take or anybody at your office or business or community. And it is, "I will," and you fill in the blank, "what will you do to help prevent child abuse?" And this is something that everybody can participate in. Of course, this is such a community effort and I just wanted to really give a shout out to the people that have gathered around the table for the past four months in preparing for this month. The Blue Ribbon Brigade is a bikers group that joined us to prepare for this month. Catholic Community Services, Family Building Blocks, Liberty House, Marion County CASA, Marion County Services, of course, Marion County Sheriff's Department. Prevent Child Abuse Oregon has joined our efforts this year as well. And they will also be at the State Capitol with us. Salem Kaiser School District, Shangri-La, and the Salem Police Department. The event next Wednesday is a big deal. We have a lot of speakers coming, Attorney General Ellen Rosenblum, Secretary of State Dennis Richardson. So it's actually going to be quite bigger than it has been in the past few years. So we hope to see you guys and our community out there next Wednesday. Thank you.
Questions?
I have a number of comments. First of all, we have our... I don't think this is working very good. I'll talk loud. We have our board meeting Wednesday, but I'll try to make sure that at least one of us can be there and would like to be. I want to thank you for coming in today, but even more, as we were sitting here, it just struck me, what a, what a special group of people we're looking at, you know, all dedicated to, well, protecting our most vulnerable and valuable members of our community. And that's why I sent Commissioner to get a picture of it because I appreciate it, what you do. And Julie mentioned a lot of other names are involved, too. But really, thank you all.
So I just want to say thank you. And Pete, I still have my, from three years ago, I wear it.
That's a little much, isn't it?
It's, it's on my wrist every day and I don't always, I don't always do it. Right? I mean, it's, it's, we all fail at some point in time with what we say or what we do to, it comes out. We don't hold it all back. But I had one of these on my hand, on my wrist when I was in Indonesia. And some young, young kids came up and I had an ALS bracelet in honor of Representative Gilliam. And I gave that bracelet to this young man. He just wanted the bracelet. But through an interpreter, I tried to tell him what it was all about and what we try to do here in our community. And hopefully, they could learn something from that. But thank you for what you do. And I know that your students have come a long ways and it's a great panel to... I mean, I could talk about all of you and what you do and in your each individual areas to help with this. But I think the meaning of what we heard today is, it's not just about you. It's not about us. It's about everybody in our community and how we get the word out. And I was just looking at the website. There's a video on there and trying to push this stuff out. And he whispered in my ear, "Go get a picture." So it'll be on Facebook and I'm sure in the county Facebook page here in a little bit. But we'll do our best to... And that's what I wrote down, is I will try to get the word out about what just happened here to help prevent. So I just want to say thank you very much for all you do in our communities to... And I heard that less than one-year-old statistic. I'm thinking, I've got a grandson who's nine months and, and then I've got another grandson who's, I don't know, he's going to be two in July.
You never see him.
The two-year-old's with me right now. And I'm not going to go into the details about that. But, and I thought about it. I'm just going to start crying thinking about it. I go, if he didn't have the family support with what he's going through right now. And I think of all those kids out there that don't have that and that their parents are struggling to try to put food on the table and get to work and find a job and all that. And without that support system, it's tough. So, yeah, I haven't seen the nine-month-old enough. Right. But he's coming tomorrow and I'm going to see him. I blocked out the afternoon.
We're asked to approve a proclamation. I'm looking if you will.
I don't know if I can see it.
You'd like me to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, that we approve a proclamation designated, designating April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All right, call question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion's approved, and now, we'll read that proclamation, if you would.
I will start it. "In a matter of proclaiming April Child Abuse Prevention Month, this matter came before the Board of...Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 29, 2017, to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment. And whereas, in 2015, there were 10,402 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of those reported cases, 823 were victims in Marion County. And whereas, we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our county by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents, and..."
"Whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities, where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners asks everyone to join together in protecting our children and does hereby proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month." Thank you all.
Thank you, commissioners.
I think you better be the one figures on being there next week, next Wednesday.
Well, I'll get down there...I always go down to that tree and take a moment of silence.
All right, our next item is under Health, again, a proclamation. We're going to consider approval of a proclamation, proclamation designating April 3rd to 9th, 2017, as National Public Health Week in Marion County.
So, good morning. I'm Pam Hutchinson, Public Health Director for Marion County Health Department, and with me is Sally Cook, one of our health educators, and she's been taking the lead on our National Public Health Week activities, which we do something every year, and we join in that with a national movement to raise awareness about public health and promote health. So, we're here today to request the proclamation, and I'll turn it over to Sally.
Thank you so much, Pam, and thank you, commissioners, for having us here today. I just want to thank you both for this wonderful opportunity and for the previous proclamation. It's a tough act to follow with such important work that's being done in our community, but it's in that spirit that I want to showcase the work that's happening in our community and the partnerships today. As Pam mentioned, every year, we come before you for a proclamation for National Public Health Week, and this year, the theme from the American Public Health Association is to create the healthiest nation in one generation, which I know we can do. And right now, we're doing that through ensuring the right to health and health care, creating health equity, and building public infrastructure and capacity. But you may be wondering, what's happening right here in Marion County? I'm going to take you through a little photo album with eagle-eye view of what's going on. We'll be looking at our partners, and we'll be asking, "What's your prescription for health? How can we make Marion County a healthier place to work, preventing child abuse, as we just heard, preventing risk factors that lower quality of life, and improving protective factors that increase our health outcomes?" You might recognize some of these community partners, and this is just a bird's-eye view at the 15,000-foot level, given the sharp eyes of our staff. So, the theme that we chose this year with Marion County is, "What's your prescription for health?" And you don't need to be a doctor to give this kind of prescription. My mom always wanted me to be a doctor, so we figured, the white coat and the prescription pad. You'll recognize some of these faces, as I mentioned. These are things that Marion County is doing to improve the lives of our residents. So, let's get started. Day one's theme this year is Increasing Economic Mobility. Now, we just heard about how when a parent is struggling to make ends meet or looking for work, it can create added stress that ripples throughout a family and a community. It's important that we address this issue in public health, and Marion County is already doing that. We have had poverty awareness training and are working to understand how poverty affects our community. On day one, that's our prescription for health. Day two, we're focusing on how to help everyone in Marion County receive at least a high school diploma. One way that we have an advantage in Marion County is through our Career Technical Education Center. This helps students who may not be thriving in a traditional schooling environment be able to be prepared for the workforce and prepared to be economically independent. Now, this photo on the right is a very special photo to me. It's the principal of our local Holman Elementary School, as well as the community outreach coordinator, or school outreach coordinator. I was contacted by that principal because she knew our county supported the Safe Routes to School program. This principal needed help from our county, and we were able to provide it. Many of her students had experienced trauma at home or within their community. This was not a question of sidewalks or traffic. This was a question of taking the neighborhood back, and that's something that the county has had a place on the table at doing, and because of that, the students at Holman are having better outcomes and feeling safe and excited about coming to school. Day three's theme is Building a Nation of Safe Health Communities. Now, you may recognize, not all of these are in the same communities. We have our Woodburn Aware Food Bank, Salem Public Library, and Woodburn Public Library as well. Both these locations host meetings for the county, post flyers to make sure that county residents know about important events, and also, reach out to kids and families to make sure that they have the support to be safe and healthy. You may recognize the new county environment, all top-notch, new doors, new paint, new windows. We've got our great communicable disease, infectious disease team. Their prescription for health is germ busters. We also have Marion County Immunizations. Immunizations are the best way that we have to prevent very tragic diseases that can happen in our community and take hold very quickly. Our M's team is really proud of the work that they've done, as they should be. And we also have our Women Infant and Children's Group, which takes care of the most vulnerable population when they're at their most vulnerable through SNAPS, food education, and access to quality care. Now, this park equipment or fitness equipment is at a park in Woodburn, and Marion County received a grant to help install this equipment. It's close to some housing in Woodburn where people don't have access to safe walking, where these...this population wouldn't have a chance normally to recognize the importance of exercise. Now, luckily, there is something for everybody. There was someone grilling some delicious barbecue the day that I was out there, but our prescription's definitely going to the park, exercising in the park, and having fun. And below, you'll see Woodburn Public Transit. Woodburn's worked really hard as a very urban area, but also still rural. A lot of the population's spread out and struggle with transportation issues. Our Woodburn Public Transit works to get people to appointments, to make sure that they can reach important services in the county, and they're such a great partner. And day six, this is a very exciting program. Our theme will be Safe and Healthy Foods, and our prescription for health is our Veggie Vouchers program. Now, with this, we have very important partners at the table, our North Lancaster Family Medical Clinic, Marion Polk Food Share, and OSU Extension. This was something that is new to our county this year, and I'm so proud. So, when someone comes into the clinic and presents issues that could be addressed by a basic improving of diet, the doctors and nurses at North Lancaster Family Medical Clinic can issue them a prescription for vegetables, a CSA prescription. That prescription is filled by the Marion County, Marion Polk Food Share Youth Farm, and they give that family weekly vegetable supplies. And in case people don't know what to do with them, OSU Extension offers cooking, preserving classes, so that people can can the bounty of our county while it's in season, and they can also healthfully prepare those foods. This is something that is so important and so vital, and without the passing on of that knowledge has the potential to be lost in a very short period of time, so I'm super excited about this work. Now, oh, went forward instead of back. There we go. This last slide, you may recognize some of these faces. On the left, we've got our Home Health Nursing Team. They recognized and needed our community, as was mentioned before, to support kids in our county, and they received a grant for safe sleep practices. This was so important for the county to take the lead. With that funding, they were able to train daycare centers, families, outreach places, to talk about safe sleep practices, putting a child on their back when they go to sleep, not using a blanket so the child doesn't overheat. They've reached so many kids and helped to prevent so many tragedies. On the right, you'll see my fearless leader, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here today, but I know she'll be watching from TV. And you'll see our team as well. We have people working on the Woodburn Heal Grant, Gambling Prevention Services, and Obesity Prevention with myself. And on the very bottom right, you'll see the Community Health Education Team with Salem Health. We all work together to help make a healthier community, and the teamwork that Marion County takes part in helps make our community healthier. There's over seven organizations in this last photo. This is the Diabetes Care Collaborative. They'll be having their walk the same day as the Child Abuse Prevention Walk as well, just bringing health to our community. So, it's a really great thing. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. Marion County's improving the health of our nation by improving our county, mobilizing members, colleagues, and the public. We have developed strategic partnerships and promoted educational and health initiatives. We are implementing effective interventions and developing policy resolutions as we speak. Thank you so much, commissioners, for taking the time to listen today. Thank you for being so welcoming, and I would humbly ask for your proclamation at this time.
Sally, Pam, thank you. And very interesting. I always have to have fun stuff, but I sure would like one of those lab coats.
I know, right?
But no, the work you do...I'm sorry, I just can't pass some things on. Again, another example of community, very much related subject, but doing good things, and proud of our Health Department for being involved with it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I just...I noticed the CTE and the education piece that you had up there, Sally. I don't know if you're aware of this, but we actually use some of our lottery dollars to give them a grant for some of the equipment they needed or needed.
Maybe none of them are.
I didn't think I'd turn it off, so I'll repeat myself. So, sure, aware, but we used some of our lottery dollars to give a grant to the CTE for some of the equipment they needed when they first did their first...when they did their first two phases, so it's important for, not only for the health...I mean, the jobs are so important for the health of our community, just as we were talking about in this, in the previous proclamation. And when is the walk?
So, National Public Health Week doesn't have a walk.
Oh, the diabetes
But the Diabetes Care Collaborative has a walk. It's in fact the same day, and the 5210 I Love Me Initiative also has a walk. I think they're all going to be walking at the same time, so as long as you just noon, 11.
What day?
Wednesday, the 4th.
Oh, next Wednesday.
I think I have to be there around 11, and I think there will be an evening walk too at Peace Plaza at 5:30. As long as you just come and walk around the building, you'll be fine.
Well, he's already assigned me to...that's my task, not his.
I want somebody at the other, at the Capitol, so I think you just
Well, I think
Go from one, yeah, special
I don't walk good.
Think they'll be meeting up at some
Can you make sure there's sunshine that day?
Absolutely. We have paid the weather bill.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, would you like a motion?
Please.
Okay. So, I'll move that we approve a proclamation designating, designating April 3rd through the 9th, 2017, as National Public Health Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation's approved, and now, we'll read that, but I'd like to know how you get big print, but we'll talk about that another time.
It's my special technical skills that I set, you know, you know how good I am with technology, right? "In a matter of proclaiming the week of April 3rd, 2017, National Public Health Week in Marion County, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on March 29, 2017. Whereas, communities around the nation observe the first full week of April as National Public Health Week, and whereas, the health of Marion County residents is of utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole, and whereas, Marion County is committed to work towards creating a healthier environment to assure that all have the opportunity to live fulfilling and meaningful lives regardless of social determinants of health, and..."
"Whereas, Marion County strives to support the health of all citizens by promoting and providing high-quality services that are person-centered, person-directed, flexible, and community-inclusive, and whereas, Marion County supports individual's choice for health as well as the mental and physical wellness of each individual within Marion County, and whereas, Marion County and the Marion County Health Department actively promote the health and well-being of county residents, provide community leadership to protect the health of the community at large from preventable diseases, foodborne illnesses, waterborne illnesses, and emerging diseases, and ensures high-quality services for vulnerable residents with limited or no resources. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the week of April 3rd, 2017, is National Public Health Week in Marion County." Again, thank you both.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation.
I'll see if I can get you a coat.
It'd be a false uniform thing. Let's see. I've lost my place. Juvenile, wonderful.
Good morning, commissioners.
And my name's Chuck Cybrant, Deputy Director of Marion County's Juvenile Department.
And I am Jacob Klotfelter, Contracts Compliance Analyst with the Finance Department.
Jacob and I are here to have the board take a look at and review, seeking your approval on the contract with Trinity Services Group. They provide our...a portion of our meals for youth that are participating in programs on our campus. We have our Detention Center, we have our GAP Shelter Program, and we have our AP Work Program, and they provide various lunches and dinners seven days a week. They also provide, well, actually, we provide breakfast. Our staff provides breakfast in all of these programs, including some kids that come from the community to our work program or not actively involved in school at this time. Our goal is always to have kids involved in their school and their education, however, there are times where they are out. We...our work program usually doubles in the summer because of school being out. We probably serve anywhere from 75 to 100 meals, going up to 150 meals during the summertime. going up to 150 meals during the summertime. So we are asking for your approval that we can continue to provide this service as the contract runs out at the end of this month.
All right, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I know we've discussed this in a work session or management update, and Chuck, just really appreciate your, your renewed focus on quality accountability and seeing if we can make sure we get what, what we need over there, so...
Thank you.
I know it's a challenge, but thank you for kind of taking on the extra time it takes to, to do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Chuck, tomorrow, I think it's, I think it's tomorrow on my schedule, I guess I could look it up real fast. I'm supposed to have a service award out there, and it's about lunchtime. Could I swing by and, and watch some lunch distribution? I know it's after the fact, we make a decision, but kind of random, just like to see.
Sure, take you through the kitchen and then the actual distribution.
See if I can make that happen. All right, anything else?
That's a good idea, Mr. Chair. So I'll move that we approve the contract for services with Trinity Services, Inc. for $1,400,000 to provide food services for the juvenile department.
I'll second the motion, any further discussion? Hearing that call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Hope to see you tomorrow. Next items under Public Works, we consider approval of a dedication of tax lot. Lots of numbers here, number 102W05A00700 for permanent roadway easement. Mark Ragan, there you are, good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Ragan, County Surveyor. Before you this morning is a, is a deed document for a, a piece of property that Marion County took in in 1959. We've been sitting on it for quite a while, and it's going to facilitate the new bridge there on Marion Jefferson Road at the intersection of Pletzer. It's in, in the design phase right now. We've identified that piece of property as a, a need for right-of-way. So that's essentially going to facilitate a drainage. What the property is, it's kind of a leftover remnant. It's designated as forest wetland, so it's really not developable, but it's cited as a need for the project. So with that being said, if there's any other questions about it, you see the exhibit there in front of you. It's pretty, pretty straight ahead what needs to be done there.
My computer's been a little lagging here on me, Mark, but we already have the property? Explain that again.
It is, it's been, it was conveyed to Marion County in 1959. So we own it as just a piece of property. And we're asking that you dedicate it to make it public right-of-way to facilitate the footprint of the, the new bridge. And what, essentially what it is, it's a little sliver piece that's between Marion Road and the, the railroad tracks.
Is there additional ground needed for the right-of-way too?
At this point, no, we've not identified any...
So you're telling me we have a piece of property, we change this designation, we can use it for what we want?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, to be permanent road easement. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the dedication of tax lot number 102W0A00700 for permanent roadway easement.
I think you left a five out, but it doesn't matter, I'll second the motion.
Did I? You want me to say that number again?
No.
Okay, you got it, Kristy, right? Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're going to, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Our next item, fewer numbers, but we consider approval of an order granting a partition in case number 16014 Kaufman. Brandon Reich, good morning, Brandon.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Before you today is consideration of an order approving a request to partition a nine-acre parcel in an acreage residential zone into three pieces. The request was originally approved by the Planning Director, subject to meeting certain conditions. The applicant disagreed with two of the conditions and appealed the decision to the hearings officer. The hearings officer held a public hearing on October 26th and this, 2016, and on December 7th, 2016, issued a decision denying the partition request. The hearings officer's denial was appealed to the board, which held a hearing on Wednesday, January 18th, 2017. The board received testimony and evidence on the matter and continued the hearing to January 25th for further testimony, evidence and discussion. The board closed the hearing and left the record open until February 1st for additional evidence. On February 8th, after reviewing evidence in the record, the board approved the partition and directed staff to return with an order consistent with its approval. Since the board approved the partition request on February 8th, Public Works staff has worked with the applicant and their attorney to develop conditions of approval that enact the board's decision. We have reached agreement on the language of the conditions of approval as well as the additional findings language, both of which are part of the order before the board today. Staff recommends the board approve the order as provided. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Man, this might be hard off the top of your head, but what are those conditions? I've not seen them, right, that were in dispute, I just don't recall. And were there any kind of hint that the negotiation, everything? I'm making that up, but I just heard, felt that.
So the, the board provided clear direction on, we felt, both the applicant and staff on how the condition should be enacted. It's just a matter of the wording of those conditions to make sure we all understood and would understand long-term, down the road, even if these got enacted, that we would, how to implement these conditions. So there's some conditions, some things would get done prior to recording the plat. Do we just to kind of briefly touch on a couple of them, or?
No, that's all right, I'm recalling now just exactly what it was. A roadway, the end of the road, Hammerhead.
It's a, it's a, it's an improvement at the end of the road where it intersects with 70th, I believe, on Canyon.
Canyon and 70th.
There's improvements along south, on the south side of the, of the subject property. Just right in the right-of-way there, south of the subject property. There's other just basic conditions that we'd apply for a partition case. Some, some would be prior to issuance of a building permit for, for down the road, once the parcels are created. And we worked hard to explain how if, if some work is done prior to May 15th, 2015, if the plat's recorded, some level of development must occur. The Hammerhead must be paved south of the property. But if the plat's recorded after that date, then there's some flexibility on, on when that Hammerhead has to be done before the plat at a later date. So we think that we have that all understood by all parties and elucidated pretty clearly in the way that conditions are written.
Okay, and you're, you're happy with it now, I'm also reading that into it.
Yeah, staff's comfortable with it, we think it's clear. The applicant, attorney and applicant are both happy with it too, and they believe it's clear we can all enact it.
All right, hope it works as planned.
Mr. Chair, you, you just said May 15th, 2015.
Oh, May 15th, 2017.
Okay.
And it is that way in the order, I just stumbled.
Yeah, but, well, you know, I left out a five, you brought the five back.
I found it.
Yeah, right, okay. And this is one of those situations where our Public Works Department, it's going to be following up on these conditions to make sure that we're going to have a tickler file to make sure these things are being done and not just sign the paper and away they go.
Correct.
Working on that. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll move that we approve an order granting partition case number 16-014 Kaufman.
All right, I'll second the motion, so it's most made and seconded to approve this order. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Again, to you, Brandon, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Our next item, I'll convene the Contract Review Board. This is under Information Technology. We consider an order approving the sole source procurement with, I'm going to say a notice, in the amount of $150,000 for intellectual property user licenses for a web services application. Camber Schlag?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and member of the board. My name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
Tom Fry, IT Director.
And we are here before you today to get permission to issue a sole source for Innitoss. The Information Technology Department entered into a contract with Innitoss by Planview in March of 2011 for the initial purchase of intellectual property user licenses for a web services application and a one-time implementation service. The original contract was awarded through an informal written quote process, according to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules. The county wishes to utilize the proprietary web services application and has paid for annual license renewals according to the Automatic Renewal Clause, Section 12.2 of the General Terms and Conditions. It is necessary to keep the software current during its continued use and provide, provide efficient and effective project management for IT-related services, projects and resources. Renewal of the software application license would allow for the efficient utilization of existing goods and services as described in the Marion County Public Contracting Rules 20-0275. We did issue a ORPEN notice on February 17th, 2017, and received no protest against that sole source. We would like to continue the contract with Innitoss for five years with a cost of $150,000. It averages between $25,000 and $30,000 a year based on inflation. And we'd like to also have the option to renew it for an additional five-year period, at which time, prior to the first five-year period, IT will review if the services are necessary to continue, and then amendment would be issued.
It's just a product that we use daily to support our project activity in IT. We put in time against projects so that we can talk to our customers about the estimate and what we've got into products. It's working really well for the department. It's, it's a good product. At some point, we'll review it against other products in the market and make a decision whether there's another path to go. But as you might expect, converting IT projects or old software to new software adds a, another expense on top of the licensing fees. So we recommend proceeding.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Camber, thank you for clarifying, it's a five-year contract with a five-year option. So it wasn't just an annual contract at 150. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the sole source procurement with Innitoss in the amount of $150,000 for intellectual property user licenses for web services application.
I'll second the motion, so it's been moved and seconded to approve an order with Innitoss for intellectual property. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes.
All right, thank you.
So I'll close Contract Review Board, that's the end of our normal business. The last to do is to read the places we'll be at together in the coming week. Getting a little longer. Today, at 11:30 till 1:00, a county community forum in Woodburn at the Woodburn Estates and Golf Club, 1776 Country Club Road in Woodburn. Tomorrow, 9:00 to 10:30, a work session on Capitol Projects. It's an update, it's part two. We've been doing lots of Capitol Projects, so break it apart. And that's in the Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Monday, 8:15 to 9:00, a meet, a meeting with Dirk Winters of the Oregon Garden Moonstone at the Mount Angel Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 9 o'clock with management update from 9:00 to 11:00, Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. 1:30 to 2:30, one-on-one with elected official treasurer, elected official, our treasurer, Lori Steele. That'll also be in Silverton Conference Room. And that's followed at 2:30 to 3:00 with a one-on-one with, with our clerk, Bill Burgess. Tuesday, the 4th of April, a work session, a solid waste study kickoff with GBB, Gershman, Brechner and Bratton Incorporated Consultants, Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Followed by, on Tuesday, the 4th at 11:00, a one-on-one with Community Service Department Head Tamara Getch. So we're in Conference Room. And then, kind of interesting, we'll go out to Chumawa High School and look at, look at their pier court from 3:00 to 5:30. That's again Tuesday, the, or the 4th Tuesday. And that's at 3700 Chumawa Road, Northeast in Salem. Our next board meeting will be at 9 o'clock next Wednesday, the 5th of April, here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street. Then we're going to Woodburn again at 12:00 to 1:00 for the Marion, Woodburn, Marion County meeting. That's a monthly meeting we have at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. We come back to Salem at 2:00 for a one-on-one with Honorable Janice Zirnoff. And that will be again 2:00 to 3:00, Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. And the last item I have is Wednesday, the 5th, 3:00 to 4:00, the Courthouse Square Green Team Kickoff Meeting, Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. I assume that's something you're doing.
I thought you were leading that, the green team.
Well, I'm all for it, I just didn't...
Yeah, Jolene, we're, we're trying to get our building here earthwise certified.
Oh, oh, now I remember the conversation.
Yeah, about toilet paper?
Well, I didn't want to go.
Okay. Well, we're not doing that.
All right, anything else you'd like to bring up today?
Boy, you know, it's spring break and it's, it's busy. I mean, I've just been busy. I am going to take a drive up the canyon this afternoon and take a look at the new trail that got built in Gates.
Oh.
We finally got that little trail down Sheriff's Public Works and the mayor of Gates, a little public access where you can take your kayak down there.
Oh, yes.
They could, they could get an emergency boat down there if they needed to.
And is that open, open to the public?
Yeah, it's, it's in our right-of-way, right on the bridge when you go across the, the river there.
Did we give that to Mark? All square, all right, good.
Yeah, they went out and surveyed it, and surveyed it, then the sheriff's work crew went up and cleared it for him. And then, and then Public Works dumped a couple loads of gravel, and then the mayor got some construction, I think, company up there to, in kind, getting all the gravel laid out, and so I'm going to see what it really looks like. I'll take a picture and make sure.
Now, I do have a kayak if you want. It's one of those ones with the little flippers on the bottom. I hope I can go back up against the north sand, yeah, but I'd pick you up in State and maybe.
I, I'm not, I kayak up on the lake, but I'm not a kayak in the river yet. I may do that if I get myself in better shape.
So we have a meeting in Woodburn, I was thinking about here a little bit. Do you want to talk? Just because we don't get a chance to talk otherwise, do you want to talk about our St. Paul meeting there and respond to a survey perhaps? Might think about that, I'll, I'll follow your lead.
In Woodburn?
Yeah. You get pretty close to the people that would be interested.
Yeah, I think we can talk, I think, I think we should bring up that we had the North Marion County traffic meeting. We've, we actually set another date, I don't know, did Sarah include you in?
Like in October, but I don't...
Okay, right, yeah. So we're going to set another date to, to hopefully share the continual things that we're doing up there. I just, I don't think it's unique. This is, this is what I would say. You know, obviously, we're on the record, it's not unique to North County that we're having all these traffic issues. And in fact, if you, remember the statistic they put up there, the sheriff put up? More accidents happen per mile travel on Corden Road.
Yes, Corden has been our worst.
Corden's like the worst corridor. And, you know, everybody has their, their perspective of where they live and what they're facing every day. And I think because we represent the whole county, some people think we don't, but we represent the whole county, we get a chance to, to look at all those things. And there are some tremendous challenges for traffic. You know, wherever we, wherever you go, it's tough.
Some is growth, some is not having the resources to... I think the upkeep, I think that Public Works did a great job, but we haven't had the money for a lot of new facilities that could make it better or...
Yeah, for expanding traffic capabilities, or, yeah.
I had one idea, just because I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but you know... Um, I had one idea, just, 'cause I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but you know, I go out to the coast most every weekend, and, uh, that, that road from Hebo is just horrible, but they've added finally just a couple places where you can pull out, and when you think of what the farmers were complaining, in fact, when we drove there-
Did they pave, did they pave it, or did they just gravelled it?
They have just a little gravel turnout, so, so a slow tractor combine could pull over and let them go by, if we could arrange a couple of those, and especially on River Road, but maybe others around the county, and it's never anything I've really talked Alan about, but, um, that would take some of the frustration and danger away, 'cause we saw that, we were driving to St. Paul, and here's a tractor and trailer, and, you know, six cars all sudden doing like, uh-
Ten miles an hour.
Ten miles an hour, and you're, and we're getting late, so I, I, this is a good example of the kind of pressure it puts on, but if there was a few pullouts, those wouldn't build up so bad, that's just one idea I've had. So, anyway, if anybody's listening and wants to come, I mentioned that, we'll be at the, uh, at the golf course at Woodburn, Woodburn Estates Golf at noon, and talk about it and other things. And it's a, as we've been doing it, it's not a lecture by any means, it's, uh, more of a conversation, one of the people there are interested in, so, makes it more interesting for them, and, and for me too, to be honest, to-
Mm-hmm.
Addressing what people are interested in, not what we think they ought to be, so.
Went to Salem City Council Monday night, interesting, because we approved some things that they were approving.
Did you recognize Sally Cook here?
Oh, yeah.
You know her anyway?
Right, right.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, yeah, they, they approved a couple of things that we had already approved, one was the building over on Front Street, and, uh, in fact-
For the CCTV part?
Right, in fact, uh, Councilor McCoy made the motion for their studio and truck storage, and, and, uh, I'm sitting over there going, "No, it's not a studio, it's just a truck storage over there," but-
Well, it kinda is.
The mayor corrected him.
They're going to make, do some, uh, trainings there, no, they probably won't, yeah, that's why they, you know, they're right now, they're just on the street there, and this'll get them a place dry and where they can keep materials and, uh-
Okay.
Do their trainings, but actual studio probably not, uh, that's right.
Yeah, there was another thing that they approved that we had, we had-
So you're kinda saying they're always behind us, is that really where you're going with that?
No, 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 I would never say that about the city of Salem.
All right.
There are, there are allies. Well, they've surrounded our building. I'm stopping there.
All right, fine, yeah, you're setting me up, but I'm not gonna, all right, anything else this morning?
Oh, good job. There's a, there's a couple of good things that we did, yeah, yeah.
Touching meeting this morning, so with that, let's call it a jerk.
Count our blessings, yep.